Bene, grazie. Mi vuoi fare dire qualche altra cosa? Come va così il volume? Uno, due, tre? Dom profile on me. Uno, due, tre. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. My pleasure.
Kim, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. Michelle, anyone online wishing to provide public comments?
Those of you who are online, if you'd like to provide communications from the public on anything that is not advertised as a public hearing or anything that's on the agenda, go ahead and raise your hand or unmute your mic. I would like to do a test, just because we do have one person who wants to report later. Kim, can you just quickly unmute your mic and state your name for me, please? Kim Morisaki?
Yes, my name is Kim Morisaki. Could you hear me?
Okay, we see you, but we... I see that your mic is moving, but I don't know that I can hear you.
My name is Kim Morisaki. Can you hear me?
Okay, thanks, Kim. We can't hear you. In the chambers.
Can you hear me now?
Sorry, Kim. Thanks for trying, but we'll try to troubleshoot on our end a little bit more.
So, other than that, John, I don't think we have any public comment that's online.
Okay.
Because we can't hear them, unfortunately.
I'm gonna go ahead and move forward then with the agenda. Dana, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Any volunteer board reports from the council? Rebecca?
Yes, I attended our insurance committee meeting this morning just to discuss raising rates. And then the second thing is the tree committee is gonna meet on the corner of East 6th and Pine Avenue on October 15th at 5:00 PM to figure out what trees to put on East 6th Street now that it's been almost finished, right, Craig? So, if the public would like to meet up, you can. We have pretty dedicated arborists that are very skilled at selecting the right trees. But if you're interested in what's going before your house, you're welcome.
Thanks, Rebecca. Additional volunteer boards? Not seeing any. I will move on to our consent agenda. Any... Ben, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, I'd request to remove item 5C from the consent agenda, please.
You got it, and that gets no discussion. Would you like to address this item now or later in the meeting?
It's up to you. We could do it now if you want.
Your discretion, now it's fine.
Okay. All right, so I'm going through my packet for this meeting, and in there coincidentally happens to be the enabling ordinance for the planning commission. And as I was scanning through that, there is one part of this ordinance that feels problematic to me, and I wanted to bring it up because I didn't notice it at the last meeting. That is on page 43 of your packet. It is section 2-15-5, and it has to do with the process of removing a planning board member. It says, "A member of the planning commission may be removed from the board by majority vote of the city council for cause upon written charges after a public hearing." And then it lists a variety of reasons why such a hearing might happen, which includes absences and some other things. To my knowledge, this is the only board I've ever heard of that has such a strange provision in it. I believe all the other boards, to my knowledge, and staff, please correct me if you know otherwise, you add and remove members to the board by a majority vote of the city council. The planning board members that are here tonight, I promise you, I'm not trying to fire you. You're good people doing a hard job. But this provision feels very problematic to me on all sides. It's calling for something akin to a jury trial, and I just think, hopefully, we never have to use this, honestly, but God forbid if we ever did. I don't think doing a process like that would be helpful to the member or the council or the community as a whole. And so, in my opinion, I think that the planning board should work like all other boards, where in the hopefully never event of having to remove a member, it should be by a simple majority of the council. So, with that explanation having been said, I would make a motion, if anybody else agrees, to modify section 2-15-5 to simply state that a member of the planning commission may be removed from the commission by a majority vote of the city council, period.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Caltabiano to a friendly amendment which will modify section 2-15-5 of our ordinance.
Could I add a friendly amendment to that? I would say that, in that case, that, and I'm not sure how to word this, but in that case, that the council moves to remove a member of the planning commission, that they're at least given some sort of written reason why, that it's not just a, oh, we didn't like you, or whatever, that there is a list of reasons, kind of like findings of fact that the council goes through as to why they would remove somebody, so that at least the person who has been removed knows why they've been removed. And then it's part of the public record as well, so people can see that we're not just working in the dark and removing people from an important board.
Ben?
I'm not trying to make this one-sided or unfair for the members, and, I mean, again, I emphasize hopefully this never is used, but I don't think it works that way on any of the other boards, and I could see problems where, you know, we're voting on something, so inherently not everybody necessarily agrees or does it for the same reasons. And I think just the whole concept of the cause is so murky, and hopefully, if that were to ever happen, I would hope the council members would state their reasons in the public comment while they were voting on it. So respectfully, I don't think it's an amendment I would put along with mine, but if you'd like to add it as a separate.
I'll withdraw it. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Ben. Further discussion on the motion to add a friendly amendment? Rebecca? Oh, I know. We're referring to Ben's friendly amendment.
I kind of like having all of this listed out about what the expectations are. So, are you suggesting getting rid of the rest of the paragraph too? Because we could just write, "A member of the planning commission may be removed from the commission by a majority vote of the city council," period, and then problematic issues may be willful disregard of state statutes, blah, 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 blah. So, there'd be more a listing of expectations for behaviors?
I think we can keep that, this very simple, and just direct our city attorney to make it consistent with other board language, ordinance language, and just leave it at that.
Can I just respond to that really quick? Steve, but the expectations, they know what those are when they get, when they're placed on the board. There shouldn't be any confusion of what their expectations are when they get on the board. There's training that goes along with a board membership and all those things. I don't think we need to list them in the removal section. But again, I agree with what John said, too. Sorry.
Thanks, Rebecca. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously, and that does bring us back to the consent agenda as amended. I will need a motion for approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda, including this latest amendment.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously as well, which brings us on to our first public hearing of the evening, which will be Resolution 25-32, amending Resolution Number 18-14 and establishing a new fee schedule for public records requests. Angie?
Good evening, mayor and council members. So, we have one of the most robust sunshine laws regarding public records, and every person has a right to examine and obtain a copy of any public information of the state. Public information is defined extremely broadly. We are also allowed to charge those who request public information a fee for, to recoup the costs involved, including staff time for gathering the information. And just for some background, we get numerous public records requests in a month, and they are extremely time-intensive. Sometimes people are so broad with their requests that we don't know what they're looking for, and it does take a significant amount of staff time. So, back in 2018, we adopted a resolution which allows staff to charge further time, basically, and hard costs, including scanning, printing, postage. When we did Resolution 1814, we really put staff time into three different categories. There was like administrative, professional, and then executive. It was kind of a ballpark of what it costs to actually fulfill a public records request. So, in 2025, the Montana Legislature passed House Bill 100, and it limits the fees that we can charge, basically, for staff time and responding to public records requests. I don't know what the history of the bill is. I've heard that it was kind of driven by the media, and then they want extensive information from the city, and we would sometimes be like, it's gonna take us three weeks to do it, and it's gonna cost you $2,000. So, anyway, now we get to charge $25 an hour. The first hour is free, basically. So, we basically revised Resolution 1815, or whatever it was, and so the following fees will apply to all public records requests. The cost of providing the information, scanning, copying, media, postage costs. A convenience fee is basically when somebody pays with a credit card. We charge a fee for that. Other reasonable costs incurred by the city, and staff time at $25 an hour, the first hour is free. And for fulfilling public records requests that I kind of call fishing expeditions, that are not a request for just, I need a building permit file, they are basically, give me everything that you've ever seen that has this word in it. We charge a filing fee of $5, and then 25 hours, again, $25 an hour, again, first hour is free. So, happy to answer any questions you have. Again, this is driven by the legislature, not by the actual cost of the city fulfilling these. We probably will lose some revenue. On the bright side, I usually review every records request before it goes out to make sure nothing's attorney-client privilege or work product. And due to a decision out of the Great Falls Court, I couldn't charge for my time for that before, and it's significant. So, I'll be able to charge 25 bucks an hour for reviewing them, on the bright side.
Thank you, Angie. Any questions for our city attorney? I had one quick question, Angie, regarding sections three and four. How do we define readily available? Having gone through FOIA requests before when I worked for the government, they can be very time-intensive.
Absolutely. There's really no definition in the bill, House bill, but readily available for me is, like, again, you wanna, you know a specific building file that you want, and building can pull it within 15 minutes.
Okay. Great.
But when we're getting, like, you know, request emails to, from containing this word, those are not readily available. IT pulls those emails for me, and I end up looking through thousands of emails, trying to figure out what's relevant.
As long as we're protected from overreach, that's all I care about. Any additional questions? We did advertise for a public hearing on what will be ordinance 25-32, resolution, excuse me, we'll hold that public hearing now. Any public comments? Can't imagine there is. Michelle, anyone online?
For those of you who are online and you have, would like to address the council regarding public hearing 6A, resolution amending and establishing a new fee schedule for public records request, please raise your hand. We're good.
Thanks very much. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council. Rebecca?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 25-32, amending Resolution 18-14 and bringing us into compliance with House Bill 100 with an updated public records fee schedule.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, sorry. Did you have a comment, Rebecca? I'm sorry.
Yeah, one time I had to pay $65 an hour just to read through one of our huge files, and I got in trouble because I messed up the pages and the order. And it was, it was about the footbridge that we just stabilized, and that was years ago, and so I'm happy to see a price reduction. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. We'll move on to item 6B, and we're gonna go ahead and hold one public hearing for what will be ordinance 25-12, as well as Resolution 25-33, but I will need separate motions, the first being ordinance number 25-12, an ordinance adopting amendments to Title 10, Chapter 2, Building Regulations Impact Fees of the Whitefish City Code, and this will be on a first reading. And then this, again, also encompasses Resolutions Number 25-33, approving amendments to the rates and policies for impact fees assessed by the city of Whitefish. Dana?
Good evening, mayor and council. You have my staff report on page 66 of the packet. Here we are doing another legislative update to our code. During the Montana Legislature, they passed Senate Bill 133, which amended state laws for impact fees. An impact fee is a charge imposed by a local government upon new developments that funds the additional service capacity required by the development from which it is collected. Senate Bill 133 specifically eliminates the administrative fee that was charged on all of our impact fees of 5%, so that is no longer permitted. That is being eliminated. The definition of the term "public facilities" was also narrowed to include only water, wastewater, transportation, stormwater, law enforcement, emergency medical rescue, emergency management, and fire protection facilities. Prior to this bill, the definition was much broader, in that with a 2/3 majority vote of the governing body of a city, other facilities for which documentation was prepared could be considered a public facility. So, we've made the changes in the code, which eliminates our parks' impact fee, our paved trails' impact fee, and our city hall impact fee, all three of which now have projects that have been identified, will be funded with a property tax revenue and potential increase in the future. Other, all other existing impact fees will remain, which includes water, wastewater, police, and fire. The administrative fee, however, on those impact fees will no longer be collected. The adoption of the proposed ordinance and subsequently the resolution that adopts the actual fees will reduce revenue to fund our park improvements, paved trail improvements, and the future expansion of city hall, as well as the administrative costs that are associated with impact fees. But the budget did account for this for fiscal year '26, as we knew this bill was already adopted, and so we have no issues with the budget moving forward at this point. If you have any questions, please let me know, but staff respectfully recommend, after holding a public hearing, the city council adopt the ordinance as well as the resolution.
Thanks, Dana. Any questions for Dana on her staff report? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing, which we will hold for both ordinance number 25-12 as well as Resolution 25-33. Any public comment this evening? Michelle, anyone online?
No.
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for two separate motions, please. Giuseppe?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 25-12. That's first motion. Do I stop here?
Yes, please.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Giuseppe?
And now, Mr. Mayor, council members, I move to approve Resolution 25-33.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion?
Yes, I'm honored that Frankie's seconding me without saying for further discussion.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Thanks very much, Dana. We'll move on to item 7A, which is consideration of approval to proceed with the purchase of an aerial ladder truck and to select vendor through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. Chief Adley?
Good evening, council and Mayor Molfeld. The Whitefish Fire Department requests the city council approve to proceed with the purchase of an aerial ladder truck from Pierce Manufacturing through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. Sourcewell is a national cooperative purchasing program that competitively bids, awards, contracts on behalf of public agencies. By using Sourcewell, the city avoids duplicating the lengthy bidding process, secures nationally-leveraged pricing, ensures compliance with procurement law, and accelerates our order placement during a period of extended industry lead times. Why Pierce Manufacturing? Within Sourcewell's fire apparatus contracts, Pierce Manufacturing is ranked as their number-one vendor based on overall value. This reflects not only the competitive pricing, but also Pierce's reputation for reliability, resale value, multiple aerial configurations available, strong regional dealer, service network for warranty parts and long-term maintenance. The city of Whitefish currently operates without a ladder truck, which limits our aerial firefighting and rescue capabilities. As multi-story commercial and residential development increase in the community, this gap increases a growing risk both to life safety, property, and fire protection. Aerial apparatus provide more advantages over our current fleet, including elevated rescues, rooftop ventilation, large elevated master streams. For these reasons, adding a ladder truck has been identified as a critical priority for the fire department and the community. The city intends to finance the purchase through, of the ladder truck through the Montana Board of Investments Intercap Loan Program using mills authorized under Montana Code. The detailed information related to the proposed loan is included in the staff report. Staff recommends that city council approve the selection of Pierce Manufacturing as the vendor for the city's first ladder truck. The procurement conducted through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program at a quoted price of $1,883,565, an anticipated delivery timeline of 39 to 44 months.
Thank you, chief. Any questions? Giuseppe?
Thank you, chief. Just a question about where we are. I thought we approved putting in the capital appropriation that the ladder track. It's now, what we are proving, approving is doing the procurement, is that what we're... Okay. So, we already approved the purchase of that track. It was like two months ago.
Correct. So, you, what we're asking for now is authorization for Dana to sign the contract with Pierce Manufacturing.
Understood. Thank you.
Ben?
Yeah, I just had one question, just because it's not in here. How does the amount that we're approving tonight compare to the amount that we approved when it came through before?
Originally, the quoted amount that we were looking at was between 1.5 and 2 million.
Additional questions? Steve?
Just have a question about, when do we pay this 1.8 million? Because if we're not getting the thing for three and a half, four years...
It's at, it's near the very end of the build cycle. In the staff report, under the financial section, it lists out, Dana created a paragraph there that lists out exactly how that loan process will work, and when we'll actually apply for that loan to purchase the ladder truck, but it's not till the last six months of the build time.
I assume there's some sort of down payment we have to make to...
No.
No? Okay. All right. Thank you.
It's when they paint WFD on the track.
The only thing I would note under the financial section is this would require us levying an additional 1 and 1/2 mills estimated at this year's taxable value, starting in fiscal year '27 because of the risk of our carryover mills being lost. But what we will do with that 1 and 1/2 mills is set aside that funding into a separate capital fund that we will use to pay, we can pay cash upfront before we have to actually purchase the ladder truck, so the loan amount will be much smaller than the 1.8 million. It's estimated that we could get that down to about 1.4 million.
Thanks, Dana. On that note, I would entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move as recommended in the chief's report to approve city manager, to authorize the city manager to procure the ladder track.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Counselor Fury. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. Thanks, chief. Appreciate it. We'll move on to item 8A. You have Dana's report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for Dana on her city manager's report? Dana, anything additional to report on?
I will just give a brief update, since we've had a question come in. We are getting ready for the election this November. The county will be mailing out ballots October 17th. Once that's done, we will be sending out notification of how to submit your ballots. This year, there will be, other than at the actual elections department, there will be no drop-offs in the city, so you have to mail your ballot or drop it off at the county election department.
Thanks, Dana. Steve?
Just since it came up in the public comment, I just want to recognize that we do currently recognize October, the first Monday, second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, correct? And city hall's closed.
Correct. We will be closed Monday. Currently, it is Columbus Day slash, and Indigenous Peoples' Day for the city. Yep.
And was there ever a proclamation made about recognizing that, or how did that...
Not to my knowledge. I believe it was direction when we updated the personnel policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Something to keep in mind for next year. Like indeed. We'll move on to item 8C, consideration of requests from Northwest Montana Community Land Trust, deed restriction release, and funding requests for 410 Trail View, and we have Kim, who's patiently waited, online. I'll believe, I believe I'll just turn... I'll believe, I believe I'll just turn this over to Kim unless you have some opening comments, Dana.
Yep. Yeah, I'll, I'll just give a brief staff report and then turn it over to Kim, assuming we can hear in the chambers. I will give Kim credit. She asked if she had to come here, and I said, nope, we've got Zoom figured out. I think we're good to go. I apologize, Kim. She's down in Missoula, would have to drive all the way here and drive all the way back, so I was like, we can make it easy. I think council knows what's going on. But, so Northwest Montana Community Land Trust has requested the release of a deed restriction and funding for 410 Trailview Way. As you know, we have gone through this process a lot, so I'm going to keep the staff report short, but you can find it in the packet on page 80. So this property, there is an opportunity for this additional home to be added to their inventory. It's a resale. The request is to release the city's deed restriction and then place Northwest Montana Community Land Trust's ground lease on that property to preserve the affordability of the home. They are also requesting $40,000 of funding to assist with the purchase of the land under the home, which will allow this home to be sold to individual making approximately 105% of the area meeting income, which is in, within the range of AMI required by the ground lease. In my staff report, you'll see all of the properties that we, the city has so far released the deed restriction and provided the properties to Northwest Montana Community Land Trust with, some, most, I would say, with a contribution by the city. For the financial requirement side, we currently have in our budget $569,000 available for appropriations, and of that, though, we do have committed about $201,000 for Alpenglow Two, though currently that project is on hold. We also have about $6,000 committed for an ADU that was built under the former rent local, local ADU program that is paid out over time, and then $200,000 is committed for the Whitefish Workforce Rental Program. So if the city council decides to support the $40,000 request, approximately $122,000 would still be available for other housing programs and initiatives through June of 20, June 30th of 2026. Staff supports this request, says it will increase the affordability of this home from the authorized sale price of 407 to 367. And we respectfully recommend city council approve the request from the Northwest Montana Community Land Trust to contribute $40,000 from the city's Affordable Housing Fund to facilitate the purchase of 410 Trailview Way, replace the existing deed restriction on 410 Trailview Way with Northwest Montana Community Land Trust's ground lease, and authorize myself to execute the sixth agreement with them as well. With that, I can turn it over to Kim if she is able to speak. Otherwise, I can answer any questions.
Apparently, we're on a short break. Sorry, Kim, I think we lost you. Our apologies. Oh, she still is? Okay. Okay.
If you could, can we, uh, thank you very much. Sorry, I'm not there.
Sorry, Kim, we can't, we're having some AV issues on our end still. Hold tight for a second, please.
Go ahead.
Turn on the TV. Are the volumes on?
Kim, go ahead, please.
Okay. If you did hear me, thank you so much. Sorry, I'm not there. I'm at the Community Land Trust gathering for six states at the moment, and I just wanted to share some additional information after I sent the letter to Dana. I was able to secure another $40,000 match through the Beverly and Bob Bragg Family Foundation that comes through the Whitefish Community Foundation, which I had hoped to be able to do, and now it's confirmed. And so that really makes the home much more affordable, and we are also bringing another $5,000 grant from the Montana Women's Foundation, so that brings the purchase price down to $322,000, which really still is a little bit of a stretch, but not, not what $407,000 would be. So if you have time, I would very much love to be able to put this home into the land trust. Riz Getz and I have been working together to do certified letters to all of the homes in Trailview, to all of those homeowners, so that they know, just have a little update from both of us about what's going on for deed restrictions and land trust projects in Trailview. And I'm very excited. This would be our 11th house in Trailview, and we're excited to just keep moving forward.
Thanks very much, Kim. Appreciate your, your patience tonight. If this continues, I think we're going to have to be provided hearing aids. It's part of our stipend. Anyway, yeah, I would entertain a motion if there's any, if there are no questions for Kim. Rebecca?
I would like to make a motion to approve the request from the Northwest Montana Community Land Trust to contribute $40,000 from the city's Affordable Housing Fund to facilitate the purchase of 410 Trailway 12 View Way, replace the existing deed restriction on 410 Trailview Way with the Northwest Montana Community Land Trust's ground lease, and authorize the city manager to execute the sixth agreement between the city of Whitefish and the Northwest Montana Community Land Trust.
I second it.
Seceded by Councilor Cal Tabiano. Further discussion? Rebecca, then Ben, then Giuseppe.
Yeah, just for the public who might not have been able to hear Kim's communication with us, because it was, whoops, was very tiny. She said that she got a $40,000 grant, I think from the community, Whitefish Community Foundation, another 5,000 grant, bringing the purchase price down to 322,000 on this. So this is part of our housing plan, is to slowly turn housing over to the Community Land Trust. Anybody in town can do this, and the land is held in perpetuity, and so it reduces the cost of buying a home. So she's also working with individual landowners on this besides this program. It's really wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Ben?
Yeah, I would just make the comment to Kim, what I've told you before is, I think finding the matching funds really helps me feel good that we are making productive use of the limited affordable housing dollars that we have available. It makes it go much further, and I think it's something we should continue to support. So I just wanted to thank you for pursuing all of those additional funds into this, and I hope you continue to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Giuseppe?
Yes, I have two comments. One, Ben stole it, so I absolutely second what Ben said. The number two is that sometimes I hear calls for the leadership to make sure not only the affordable programs support rentals, but support also ownership. Regardless of what I think personally about the worthwhileness of either one, we're showing that that's a good way, this way is a good way to see private, public funds, and local funds, ownership in improving ownership affordability versus other ideas where we try to build stuff ourselves.
Thank you, Giuseppe. Further comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Thanks again, Kim. Thanks, Dana. We'll move on to item 8C, which will be WCUP 25-05, adding a condition to limit the hours of operation of the bar within the Kimosabe Retail Store, and this is on page 87 of your packet. Dana?
Good evening again. You get me, I'm the B team, because it is the Montana Association of Planners Conference, so our entire planning staff is out of the office. But on September 2nd, after the presentation by staff and their staff report, the city council approved a conditional use permit for Kettle Mountain LLC to operate a bar in the existing Kimosabe Retail Store at 20 Spokane Avenue, which is WCUP 2505. The information provided during that meeting is included in your packet. At the September 15th meeting, the city, Councilor Sweeney made a motion to reconsider WCUP 2505 for the sole purpose of the city councils, consider adding a condition to limit the hours of operation of the bar and to add this item to the October 6th agenda. Of course, had we known all the planning staff would be gone, maybe we would change it, so, but it's okay. The motion was seconded by Councilor Quinell and passed unanimously. Since then, the applicant has submitted a letter regarding the proposed added condition, which is also included in this packet. There are no financial requirements. I will just note that the applicant has specifically requested that the hours of operation are permitted until 10:00 PM without amplified outdoor sound after the time limits prescribed by the city's noise regulations and subject to continued compliance with all applicable ordinances. With that, staff respectfully recommends that the city council reconsider approval of WCUP 2505 within the confines of adding a condition to limit the hours of operation of the bar. Happy to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you, Dana. Any questions for Dana on her staff report? Not seeing any. I would entertain a motion. Frank?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would move to add an amendment to the CUP that limits the hours of operation of the bar in that, in that facility from 10:00 AM in the morning to no later than 10:00 PM in the evening.
Thank you, Frank. Is there a second to the motion?
Just to clarify, the, the letter from their attorney said 11:00 AM, so you're giving him an extra hour in the morning?
Oh, no. It said, I was reading 10, so...
10:00 PM.
11.
11:00 AM to 10:00.
11:00 AM is even better for me.
Okay. I'll second.
Seceded by Councilor Quinell. Further discussion? Steve?
I just want to say, I, I'm still opposed to us serving liquor right across the street from the school, and I've been opposed to that for a long time, so I am going to vote against CUP in general, but the, limiting the hours, I think, is a better thing than what we would have gotten otherwise.
Thanks, Steve. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry on a five-to-one vote with Councilor Quinell voting in opposition. Thank you, Dana. We will move on to item 9A, appointing a city council member to serve as an alternate to the Community Development Board Planning Commission. Frank?
I, I'm the primary on this, and it's, it's been a strain for both Rebecca and I to manage this, and I, based on my understanding of interest, and I would oppose that we appoint Ben if he will accept it. He's got the background, I think, that's necessary in terms of construction. Andy, would you like to do it? Who wants to do it?
I think Ben's open to it.
Well, I just, I...
Don't let me speak for you, though.
I'm making people really happy, but... I would be back up to that too. I think it would be...
Yeah.
Double alternate?
Yeah, it seems to me that, you know, having a couple of people, or three people even, to be able to do that is, would be helpful, given everyone's schedules being tight, and, I mean, I can't do it all the time, but I can do it sometimes, yes, so...
Should we just rank all six of us in terms of our...
Again, given what I see going on and the requirements of that board in particular, it would be really helpful if we had a couple of alternatives, and I, I think that would be great if, if we could have Ben and Andy.
Great. I'll entertain that as a motion.
That's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seceded by Councilor Quinell. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that is unanimous.
Reluctantly as well.
Thanks, Ben, and thanks, Andy. So we'll move on to item 9B of letters regarding the closure of Columbia Avenue. We heard quite a bit of public testimony earlier in the meeting. Any comments on this? I guess I would just redirect, if you don't mind, back to Dana and/or Craig regarding the requirement for a special event permit?
So the city requires a special event permit for special events. We have not closed any roads for any type of events that we've seen. The only event we co-host is at City Beach at 4th of July, which is co-hosted by our Parks Department, but we actually have staff working there. So we've, we've told them that they could get a special event permit so that we can go through that process of reviewing it. The challenges we see with the road closure is not all residents have come forward along that road. I think PD could probably share some of their concerns. You know, we wouldn't, we'd have to actually have our Public Works Department bring barricades to barricade before and after if we were to shut down that road. Then we're also taking on the legal liability of the event. Generally, when we have winter carnival, they pull the special event permit, they provide the liability insurance that covers the city if anything was to go wrong. So as soon as we section that off, it is our responsibility to ensure safety, whereas just typical, you know, families going trick-or-treating, it's just the typical walking down the sidewalk, it's their responsibility. So we would take on more of a liability if we were to close it off as an event, essentially. And I think Angie would agree with me on that, and then Bridger.
I absolutely agree. The, the reason that we acquire special events to have insurance is so we're not putting the city at risk. You can get special event insurance. I have heard numerous times from people about how expensive it is. It's not necessarily true. MMI A offers special event insurance for about $300, so. I, I just, I have concerns, if we're going to close off the road, then we're liable for anything that happens. I know Bridger has some concerns, safety concerns as well, but I'll let him speak to those.
Bridger, anything to add?
Yeah, as I received that letter, I've talked with Ray and have the boxages and have expressed this in the years past as well. Special event would be my preferred way of handling this. At least at that point, we could put on restrictions. If we close off that section from 2nd to 6th, you're looking at displacing about 100 vehicles, that's a guess, I think it's on the low end, and moving those throughout the community. And then you're inviting the entire town, and like was voiced today, Columbia Falls, Kalispel, and the county on those streets. Fires, alcohol use, games, setting up structures in the street, as those streets are now cleared of parked vehicles is a concern. Who's going to take the liability of that? My request from Craig would have concrete barriers to block off that roadway, especially if we're going to allow people to gather in those streets. It brings a safety risk of a vehicle not seeing a barricade or driving through a wood barricade to cause some serious injury. So those are some of my concerns as I just think about what I'd look at if I received a special event permit, so.
Thanks, chief. We'll start with Giuseppe, then I think Steve, you had your hand up.
In point of order here, Mayor, are we discussing with that a motion? Because this is a discussion from a letter, right? So I can ask questions?
Discussion's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Well, number one, I, I think part of the community character is, although I don't understand it, is supporting this kind of kids' events, and I'm trying to figure out a way that it keeps the city staff and leadership safe while allowing with a form of common sense approach, safety for the children that walk that street. We know, we know every year, there are a lot of children and parents walking that street, many other streets, but that is the Mecca for Halloween in Whitefish for the youngsters. So I was wondering, we closed 6th, first of all, how many different ways do we have to close a street? One is having a special event, like the farmer's market. Every time they do a special event, or they have a recurrent special event, so we close that, all those blocks for farmer's market. Now, another way we close streets is when Craig goes and fixes the street, right? I mean, 6th has been closed for now some time, and so I was wondering if there was a broken pothole in that street that we wanted to fix that night, could we close that street for, not for an event, but, but so that special, working, works, public works can go and fix the pothole? I volunteer to break it. But I, I'm trying to say, can we find a creative way that works? Because to apply for a special permit, you need to have a body that does it. And, and the gentleman said, I'm not here to sponsor Halloween, but I'm here seeing a concern that is a safety concern, and I'm asking you to find a way to solve it.
Steve?
That's, that's kind of where I was headed, too, is that this is obviously a safety concern in our community. People are coming anyway. They weren't saying that if we close the streets, we're going to get people from Kalispel and Columbia Falls as well.
and Columbia Falls as well. They're already coming. They know about it. It's a thing. It's been a thing for years. So I just wonder if there's any other way we could close the street without closing the street, particularly this year, like some sort of soft closing where we have police officers at the intersections that we want it to be closed, discouraging people from traveling down that street in a car? And granted, I know that some people are going to be in a car going down there. And is there, what about doing it ourselves? What about making it a city-sponsored event? Since we know it's here, we know it's happening, what about making it a city-sponsored event? And then we'd have to know the numbers and how much it would cost us. And in terms of the cars, isn't there a way we can just say, hey, you need to park in the alleys on Halloween night? Seems like most people would do that anyway, knowing what happens on Columbia Avenue during, on Halloween night. They don't want their cars out there on the street. So those are all kinds of things that are swirling in my head. And as, you know, as the governing body of the city, we know we have a safety issue on Halloween night down there, especially, and it's our most vulnerable. It's our little kids and our elderly people that are out with their grandparents or grandkids trick-or-treating. So I don't think it's, I don't think we can just wash our hands and say, well, we don't have a special event, so we can't, so we can't close the streets because then we're responsible. I think we need to figure out a way to either take control of this ourselves or find an entity that is going to control it. Or, God forbid, shut it down. Because if, those are the, those are the options in terms of making it safer.
Ben, Ben and Rebecca?
How do we handle, like, a parade? Is, are those all underneath an organization of special?
All are special event permits. Even the school district does one for homecoming parade.
Yeah. And the school district does one, even there, okay.
In fact, we require traffic detouring companies now to assist with traffic detours for, like, winter carnival, because we just don't have the resources, and so they're having to hire a private traffic control company to assist us with that.
I mean, could we, what about to Steve's question? I mean, what if the city of Whitefish, what if we got our own special insurance or whatever, impose our own conditions on the, on the behavior in the event?
We'd have to staff it, so you're going to look at probably overtime for staff members, not just police and public works. We'd probably have to have other staff members there. I think we would have to, you wouldn't want to shut that down and bring a whole bunch of people to that area without the consent of the homeowners. You're literally creating an event in front of their homes. We require, like, when we have a special event, even downtown with farmer's market, I always, you know, ask for letters, or when they close Spokane and Third parking lot for the bike race, I get letters from all the neighboring businesses confirming that it's okay to close down the roadway. So that's been our process. Council could come in and tell us that, yes, we want you to do an event, and we want you to close down. Don't ask the homeowners. That's fine. I think what you will potentially see, though, with closing off those roads, is parents will feel more comfortable just dropping their kids at the road to let them go trick-or-treat and try to find them later, and then police might be dealing with lost kids more, because there's going to be no incentive for a parent to stay with their child. I'm sure that already happens, that kids run down there by themselves, but as a mother of two children, I would never let my child trick-or-treat without me there, regardless of how safe our community is. It's dark. You don't know who's out there. Our community has changed. I come also from bigger cities, so I have those fears. My dad was a cop, so, you know, I have the fear built into me. So I would worry that we'd be encouraging parents to say, drop your kid at Sixth and Columbia, your group of kids, let them run, and come back and get them in an hour, and then you have no adults down there. And so by not blocking the roads, parents have to take a little bit more safety. That's my personal opinion, but if council wants to host the party, we can make it work. It will be difficult. If anything, this year, I think what would, we could potentially look at is maybe getting some big orange signs that just say, you know, caution, children on street, or something that at least puts up a caution sign, you know, consider alternative route or something on Columbia, maybe at Sixth and Columbia, for those through-traffic drivers. But I think a lot of the through-traffic drivers are coming to bring their kids down there, drop them off, and then go find parking later, especially depending on the weather.
Yeah, that was going to be my suggestion, Dana, that can we come up with essentially a bit of a soft closure? Because we're looking at five intersections. We've got second down to sixth, and that's what we're going to do. And can we have at all of those intersections, both east and west and north and south, can we have signage in there, Bridger, that, and have posted speed limit, you know, of ten miles an hour, say, for example, for that night? And is there some way to do that to at least alert drivers that there's a lot of kids on the street, I guess? See if that makes any difference, or suggest alternate route, possibly? I get the difficulty of just closing it. I mean, I see from an expense standpoint, and a liability standpoint, and a logistical standpoint, for us, it's difficult at best, but can we make it safer without actually closing the road, I guess is my question?
Yeah, I would refer to Craig on how many signs he has to do. You know, we could, we could be creative and create some things as well, you know, and just on the staffing side of it. Halloween, for my twenty-five years, we're full staff, is working Halloween. So putting a police officer at each intersection, we've got the whole towns doing Halloween. And this year, it's Friday night, and downtown's going to be pretty hopping. Halloween's actually a lot of fun to work, so the officers do enjoy that. You know, we have, we've put up crosswalks on Second Street and use the posse members. If the weather permits, we'll have our bicycles out. I know in Ray's letter, we did horses one year, we don't have that ability with the posse, but we can surely request the posse come out and support us. That's easily enough to done, whether we close the street off or not. Again, if we're going to close those streets off, remove all the vehicles from that street so we don't have anything within the barricade and the secured area that could cause an issue, my suggestion is it's going to have to be a hard barricade. If you used a wood barricade or something less, it could be problematic because you're drawing and encouraging, as they said, they don't sponsor the event, but they sure do encourage it by providing the candy and those type of things to those neighbors. If we're going to invite the public, we're going to be responsible for their safety.
Rebecca?
I, I think we are already responsible for the safety. Like they mentioned, we have police down there a lot. Sorry. But I, I do agree that if there's anything that we could do more formally through education, maybe even, I mean, it's too bad we don't have big blow-up outfits that police could wear at the end of the streets or something, you know, and say, no, no, no. But maybe, maybe, sorry, Ange. But I, I kind of agree with the neighbors. I think it's, it could be potentially dangerous. For some reason, though, because my office is nearby there, so I walk it a lot on Halloween, it's so delightful, and it's, and it's usually very, very safe because there's so many kids, nobody is on the street. We don't want anybody on the street, so maybe we could do more education about where to park this year or something. I, I know you guys worry about liability, but, and I hate to not honor what the neighbors are worried about, because it is so charming to go down there on Halloween and see everybody's, you know, front porches and the witches and the little goblins. So I don't know. Maybe there's more, more that we could do educationally early on? I don't know.
Giuseppe?
Yes, just going back to the process. So the gentleman came and asked, how can I do it? And the answer was, you could do it. We could block the street, given that we, you applied to a special event permit?
We told he could apply. We didn't say it would be approved, because we have to look at all of the impacts that it does to services, what roadways are closed, we have to have fire access, emergency access. So we offered him to apply for a special event permit, but we did not say that it was approved.
Okay, but if, if they applied, that would be an admin process. We don't have to come through public hearing, correct?
Correct.
And is the farmer's market doing this every Tuesday?
They apply for one special event permit, but it's for every weekend. Their setup's the same. They've been allowed to apply for that for every weekend.
Let's assume they apply. What would be the ballpark cost to the applicant? Is there an idea?
The cost is the administrative fee and the cost of insurance, and for them, park rental fee, because they're renting Depot Park for that time. But for this, say there is a closure for this, and it's a, we'll call it a block party, there is no fees that we get to charge other than the administrative fee of a hundred fifty dollars. And they can show, if they can show indigent status, then we waive that fee.
Oh, I was going to say, that's racist, but because I feel like.
Could I say it wrong? Not indigenous, no. Sorry.
My Italian gets in the way.
Lack of funding, or lack of financial.
Indigent.
Indigent, yeah.
I missed the T at the end. Sorry. So it's one fifty, one fifty application fee, and you sure, Ange, is three hundred dollars for the insurance?
I think that's a pretty close ballpark. I was just at a meeting with M M I. A. a couple of, well, it was about a month ago now, and that was about what their fee is for special event insurance.
So can I apply and gift it to them personally?
Sure.
I mean, they pay, part of them pay for my salary, so I feel like.
I don't care who applies for it. I just care that they have the insurance. I know I am the absolute killer of fun, but I'm an old defense attorney, so.
Giuseppe, just to give you some support, not for discussion purposes, I'll be happy to participate to support that. So I just, I think this is an important thing that we just need to do. It's, it's an organic thing that's grown over the years. It is fully part and parcel of Whitefish kids' experiences. I just, I just don't see how we ignore this and say, oh, you're on your own. We're responsible for protecting all of our citizens on our streets and otherwise. It just, I mean, this is not a real new liability, in my view. So, but to the extent we can make this happen through that, can we get, can we get in place a special event permit and the insurance between now and Halloween?
So we have two co-applicants at this point?
I'm in.
Okay. Do we have the whole council application? So we're going to split it evenly.
Just, and just so that you know, with this closure, I think the next one you're going to see is Central Avenue during after-school hours, is what they're going to request.
They have enough money to do it themselves.
Yeah, and just the parking for downtown. That will be the next request that comes.
Does the applicant then have to pay the cost of the barricades?
No, that's all going to be, that'll be in our budgets that we don't have budgeted. The overtime and stuff, we'll just, we'll have to accommodate the overtime in our budgets. Yeah.
So when we passed our special event ordinance, I think it was two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, after we had our little debacle with our Nazis wanting to march, one of the issues that I presented to council is, do you want to charge basically people for the costs that the city bears resulting from special events? And the, the answer was no. We believe these are community events. We believe these add value to the city, so.
I can't think of anything that adds, well, there's some things that add more value, but this is something that's been going on for thirty, forty years, probably, at least as long as I've lived here, and it adds a lot of value. So thank you, Frank and Giuseppe, for stepping up and saying you would sponsor this out of your own pockets. I appreciate it.
Any additional comments, Ben?
So, just so I'm clear, so anybody can just apply for a block party permit, right? And that's essentially what this is. This is a block party. So any citizen, Mr. Boxich, Giuseppe, anybody could apply for that, and then the staff is going to incur all the overtime and all the whatevers that we're talking about anyway, the barriers? Really, it's just a question of who's, who applies for it?
Well, we can put conditions on it. So we have, I have the special event code provides what conditions, what we can require based on how the event impacts traffic, impacts fire safety, public services, if we have the staff or not. Garbage is a big one when we do special events, having them remove and clear any garbage from the event. Given these are kids running around keeping their candy, you'll probably get some garbage, but they'll probably try to make sure it's in their bags. But like when we have, like, parades or downtown events, they have to remove all the trash. They might have to clean the bathrooms midway through, restock them for us. So there's things we've been able to add, just based on our staffing availability. But yeah, we have a whole code that you've, you have that gives us the rules and what we can look at. Traffic, impeding flow of traffic on sidewalks and roadways, though, is, is a big part of it.
If this was applied for, as a block party permit, do you expect it as something you would normally approve?
We don't really have a block party permit. If you're closing down a road, it is considered a special event. There's a couple of different things that trigger a special event permit. One is closing down a road or impeding traffic flow. The other is if you're using a public space like a park, and you're going to have more than seventy-five people. So if, if they didn't want the road closed down, they were just like, say you wanted to have a party, and everybody's in their yard having beer or whatever, but you're not impeding traffic, you're not closing it down, we don't care, but we do care when you start closing down public roads. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I thought I remembered a discussion here within the last few years about block parties, and the council expressing a desire to make it feasible for citizens to have block parties.
Yeah, and we were exploring that, and what staff came to was that the block, it was to have a easier application, was what the direction was, still require the insurance, still require the fee, but have an easier application where they didn't have to go through the full packet. And so we were looking at that, but a lot of it still has to be retained. So that's still on our to-do list, I believe. We just haven't gone that far, because realistically, the amount of paperwork in the special event permit and a block party application would be very similar, based on the direction we received.
Well, I'm out of answers and ideas, but I, I concur that I, I hope we can find a way to do something here, because, you know, we've gone down there every year. I think that is a very true Whitefish event that's been there for a long time. I do think it already has dangers associated with it, and I think if anything, we would be trying to mitigate those, so.
So typically, we require, so, so questions, since essentially, like, the city council will be applying for it, and I have your, your opinions up here. Typically, for an event, when we close off a street like that, we'd be requiring porta-potties to be available? I mean, is that something that you're looking for? Is this just, we're just road closing? Because it would be very unique that when we do, you know, special events, we do require restroom facilities. I realize that Halloween's a little different, but our facilities do close at eight o'clock here at City Hall, so.
What I think, at least I'm interested in doing, and I think Giuseppe is interested in doing, and I think all of us, is facilitating the existing program that goes on in that street. What we're all, we're worried about is safety on that street that is created by having all these people there. I'm not interested in sponsoring this concept that we have to now provide porta-potties, and that we have to, you know, the block is responsible for taking care of itself, as it always has, in my view. And my, my entreaty, Giuseppe, is that I don't want Ray to have to pay for a dime or any member, but we need somebody from that block to apply for this thing, and then we'll, I'll be happy to pay whatever, part of whatever the insurance cost is to get that thing done. But that's the way I think this ought to operate. I mean, I, I don't want us to over, I don't want to be part of over-formalizing this just because we want to protect these kids from vehicle traffic. I mean, that's, that's all we're talking about here. I'm not talking about providing bathrooms. I'm not requiring that. I expect them to police their block. That's just what we expect. And so that's what I'm interested in, and what I think is fair under the circumstances. But that's kind of what I, what I glean from this thing. Anybody else feel differently?
I, I just think you're leaving, do what you want to do, but you're leaving staff in an interesting situation, including the P D. and Public Works, is to... in an interesting situation, including the PD and Public Works, as to what are you requiring of them in addition to what Bridger already indicated is one of their busiest nights on patrol, where he's fully staffed. And now, we're gonna be adding, you know, this additional requirement for, for barricades and policing. And I just think that needs to be taken into consideration.
I, I agree, John. I'm not...
I mean, if there's a way to sign it that's less...
I agree.
...burdensome than bringing in concrete barriers and barricades, I'm all for it.
I, I agree. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting, what we're looking for is a solution set to protect these kids from, in a more formal fashion than we've been doing, whether it's signage or anything else. I mean, patrols are out there anyway. I mean, Bridger's, I mean, it's his busiest, it's one of their busiest nights. I get it, and it's a Friday night, it's gonna be a disaster. But we still have to protect that street somehow or some way.
Yeah, and we're there every year.
I know you are.
We've managed this for quite some time.
I'm not trying to create more work, right.
Yeah, and, and what, you know, their request is to, to stop traffic traveling down Columbia Avenue. The, the only way I see that, for, for us to do that, is to block, blockade the road.
Right.
And remove all parked vehicles. Because if, if you put up wood barricades, like we've done in the past with Winter Carnival years ago, before we started putting in our barrier, barriers, we'd have a vehicle in the middle of a parade, because somebody moved the wood barricade, because they're very easily moved. Somebody's gonna wanna get out of their house on that. We're gonna have to communicate with every property owner. You're not gonna be able to access your driveway. There's very few driveways on that road. It's gonna take at least 20 Jersey barriers to block off the sections that they requested. Most of them are at intersections, but there's two alleyways between Second and Third that exit into Columbia Avenue. So, it's 20 Jersey barriers that'll have to be put in place to do that. And they're, we don't do it at night for the Winter Carnival, so none of our barricades have reflectors on them. So, there's gonna be, have to be some kind of reflective material at those intersections as well. And Craig provides those. I don't believe we have 20 of them. But we're close. We've been, we've been at them every year for the Winter Carnival, but, and it's his crew that have to move them. We will, like we do now, we patrol Trick or Treat Street on Central. We move to Columbia, and then we will have fun with everybody else downtown.
Giuseppe?
Yeah, since I started that. First of all, I apologize for maybe speaking, if I were a citizen, I could, normal, not a city council member, I could have come and proposed it. I don't wanna put any undue influence on the staff. So, I hear you, Mayor. That's a good point you made, and for that, I apologize. I've always think, I've shown that I trust the staff, because you're the people doing the work and paid for it, and you're the professionals. So, I take back that offer, but I say, if between the citizens of that block and the staff, there is a process in place, and if that process will require some money, then call me, and you act and do what you need to do. But if they need to pay an application fee, or whatever is required, don't, I won't pay for porta potties anyhow. And call me, and I'm willing to donate whatever that financial requirement is, okay?
I'm with Giuseppe. Can I just, I don't wanna belabor this too much, but I think we're talking about, to me, I'm seeing two different problems. There's this year, which we wanna solve as quickly as possible, but there is an ongoing issue. This, it's not gonna get smaller. Halloween on Columbia Avenue is not gonna get smaller over time. I, I think we need to, within this next, whatever we decide this year is appropriate, fine. Beyond that, we need to come up with a solution. And I think it should come, it can come, some ideas can come from us. The other ideas need to come from staff, but it's clear, it's been, how many years has Ray been in here talking to us about it? It's probably close to five now, right? Maybe more. We need, we need a long-term solution for what's gonna, what happens down there on Halloween. And I, I think everybody understands that it's not safe for kids necessarily. Fortunately, nothing has happened yet, but it could. And I think we need to figure out what that long-term solution is, and have it ready for next year, for sure. I don't think we can create the long-term solution by this Halloween, but I would like to, to see us have some sort of plan for next year and the years beyond.
Further comments from the council? Is that clear enough direction, Dana? Okay. You have letters enclosed in the packet regarding the CDB. Any comments on those letters? Sure.
So, I was on the planning board for two, sorry, I'm doing this, the public, just, that's how far I have to talk to make it clear. Planning board for two terms, and it came up repeatedly from one person in particular, that we had to update our growth policy. Finally, when I got on council, I put it on our city council goals. And even then, we had a hard time finding out when we were gonna get to it. So, then we had another work session, and I suggested attaching it to the planning board meetings, knowing it was one time a month where they would have to do, to, to get this done. We did do corridor planning, so that helped a lot. But it's always going to be a difficult process to update a growth policy that you haven't really done cohesively for a long time. So, I, I know there's divisiveness around this, but I just wanna, from my perspective, having been on the planning board, having heard, you know, been a chair of the corridor, one of the corridor studies, and watching all of this go on, I think we're doing great. I mean, I really do think we're doing great. I think it's hard work. I think people come to these committees with their personalities and their backgrounds, and some people come with a very detailed background, and some people come just for that moment. But I, I'm very pleased that we have made the progress that we have, and I'm sure now that we have the land use consultants on board, that we'll be able to complete things on time. And I just would ask the community to be a little bit more consciously kind to one another going through this process. Not everybody is a natural-born speaker, myself included. Not everybody has a legal background. Lots of people don't know anything about planning. It's a messy thing when you're planning for the future. Luckily, we have an excellent staff. Luckily, we got Alan, which is a miracle, because he's got all the skill sets we need to get this done. But I know people are worried about how it's gone and what's happening, but I actually think we're right on track, and I'm overjoyed that we got the land use planning consultants that we got. And I just wanna encourage people in the audience in particular, not to lose heart, just because it gets messy. I mean, governance is messy. I mean, we're human beings, you know, deciding our future. And human beings are not perfect all the time. We bring what we can to the table. Otherwise, we move forward as best we can. And so, I know there's a lot of concern about where we're at, but me personally, I'm really happy about the progress we've made, and I have no doubt that we'll get it done in time either.
Thanks, Rebecca. Steve?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna push back a little bit on, on those comments, Rebecca. As somebody who had a front row seat to this from the very beginning of this process, it became clear within the first couple months that what the, the, there was some confusion over what the role was of the planning commission, or the Whitefish Community Development Board as to what their role was. And repeatedly, over time, it became clear that some members did not understand that role, and they continually pushed for things that, that were out of the scope of, of that, of, of their duties on that board. And, and there was also a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff going on, on that board, that I think didn't, that didn't serve the community purpose at all. In fact, what it did was it eroded the, the trust that the community had, not only in the board, but also in the staff, and by virtue of the board and the staff, in some ways, that reflects on us, too, because we're the ones who put those people in place. And I think that the, what I wanna say to the people who wrote in letters is thank you for taking your time to do that. We hear you, and we understand that. Anybody who's watched a meeting can see the things that have been brought up in, in those concerns from the community. And the actions that follow will be directly related to what we have decided as a board, as, as a council, and the things that we've seen with our own eyes as well. And I just wanna reassure the community that we are aware of, of your concerns, and we, and we are going to do something about it as we move forward. And so, I, I just, I think that the, the biggest problem, this is beyond just watching the sausage be made. It's difficult work, yes. It's very difficult work. But it goes beyond what is just being difficult versus what somebody characterized as a very personal viewpoint that, that is not let go, when it is clear that the professionals in the room have concerns about pushing forward viewpoints that don't belong in the growth policy. And that, that has been the major problem with this process from the very beginning. And I had a front row seat at the beginning, and I had to step away because the board was clearly not functioning, under my leadership as the chair, despite my continuous warnings of, this is out of bounds, this is out of bounds, this is out of bounds. And I, I, I'm glad that, that the community saw it as well, and we have also seen it, and we'll see how the future progresses. But I, I want the people to know that we have, that we are listening.
Thank you, Steve. We're gonna move on to councilor comments. Giuseppe, would you like to begin this evening?
Apart from learning what each one of our interpretation of six inches is, I have no other comment.
Thanks, Giuseppe.
Steve?
Uh, just a couple things. Again, we're here with the tech issues. I'm sorry. I don't wanna keep beating the dead horse, Dana. I understand. Everybody's frustrated. We're all scratching our heads. The, the one thing I'd like to add to the obvious problems tonight is that when I'm sitting here, up here, and I'm looking out at the crowd, I can see who's in the crowd, but I can't see who's online. And we used to be able to see who's online, that at least the names would be there. Now, unless they have their camera on, we can't see that. I would like us to return to having, be able to see who is attending virtually as well, if they are in a Zoom meeting. At least with a name.
I think the only thing that we would have to, as long as you're okay with this, the video camera of the council chambers also showing up there, because that's one of the challenges they weren't able, I don't think we're able to do. Like, we can put the Zoom back up there, but you would end up seeing the video of yourselves as well ongoing at the same time, as long as you are okay with that.
I love looking at myself.
I, right? Who wouldn't? Everybody likes slippers, Steve.
All day. Narcissus was a good friend of mine. And the other thing is, I think we need to figure out how to stream live on YouTube, so people can just watch if they want to. I, I know that there's some confusion, but we put a man on the moon in 1969. This is not an unsolvable problem. Sorry. It's the last thing I wanna say. Thank you for agreeing. I think what, John, I think what you mentioned is next year, we need to pay attention to Indigenous Peoples' Day and come up with a proclamation. I'm wondering if we could also come up with a proclamation by our next meeting, recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and maybe all of us could wear something pink, or if we could get some ribbons to wear in honor of that. I think that would be something that we could do to show our support for women and breast cancer awareness as well. And then the last thing, just kinda goofy, but I'm gonna challenge all of you. Since Nathan challenged us to ride our bike to school, we, or ride our bikes all week last week. I wasn't able to do it, because I can't ride back and forth to Kalaswell every day. But I do ride my bike to council meetings pretty much every time the weather is not terrible. And I do have a fat bike this year with spikes, so I'm gonna try to ride in the winter as well. All of us live within riding distance. I think it would be nice to see us roll up on bikes instead of in our cars. So, that's all I have.
Thanks, Steve. Frank?
Nothing further this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Ben?
The only thing I wanted to do was make a final comment from our work session earlier about the resort tax. I thought that was an interesting discussion. I think there's more to figure out. But I think based on where I landed, I didn't get to make a final comment, so I'll make it now, was, I do think something needs to change, especially given the state legislature changes that are gonna cause a lot of the resort tax relief to go back to second homeowners. It's just a question of what and how, in, in my opinion. And I think that the, the option one, which is essentially requires the person to be an owner-occupant primary residence to receive the tax relief is, is a good idea. I also like the flat share that we talked about, and the hybrid concept of, you know, we take the, all the resort, the resort tax funds available, we divide them up amongst the primary occupants, and then we give everybody an equal amount. I still like that idea. And the reason why is because I think that the citizens of this town put up a lot with the visitation economy. I think it has pros and cons. And in some ways, to me, the resort tax relief, the property tax relief, is one tool that we have to help soften the blow. But I also, I think that anybody, a resident who lives in a studio apartment has some of the same issues that somebody that lives in a mansion and an iron horse has. And so, I do think that the relief should go equitable to both. They both have to deal with all the traffic in the summer, and then no, no restaurants available in July, and et cetera. So, so anyway, I'd like us to continue to explore that. As far as the renters go, I do think your point, John, was well-taken about the fact that, again, yeah, everybody has to deal with it. And so, that includes people that rent, although the administrative issues feel very difficult to overcome in terms of how do we identify who is actually here. And so, I say maybe that would be an optimal way to go about this, is to include renters, but if we can't, we can't. But it seems like, to get anywhere with that question, we would probably need to wait and see what the state does, because the state is probably going to, and the county are gonna have their own ways of identifying who is a primary resident of whitefish. And optimally, we can do what they do as much as possible. And I'm, I'm not even sure how to really progress that conversation forward without even understanding what it is that they're doing. So, I hope we can wait and see kinda how that shakes out. I think that's a big change that is happening in terms of the tax structure and how, now that the state is determining second homes and our occupants. So, I think we should wait and see how that develops, and then revisit the conversation and see what we can do.
Thanks, Ben. Rebecca?
Yeah, I think I'm too tired to talk, but thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. And Andy? I think I'm worn out, too. Just a reminder of the council retreat on November 1st. And even though Scott and Whitney left, I'd just like to thank them for attending tonight and observing this board in action. With that said, we are adjourned. Thanks.